Okay, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and we're going to call this meeting of the Houston Planning and Zoning Commission to order. My name is Jerry Whites. I'm consulting city planner. I'm not a member of the planning commission, but I'm going to preside over the meeting temporarily until we elect a chairman, and at that time I'll relinquish the chair to the chairman, whoever is elected. We have an agenda published. This is a public meeting. It's a...the items on the agenda are public hearings, and I'll talk about the public hearing procedures here in a moment. But the first thing we want to do is I'm calling the meeting officially to order. I did not put roll call on the agenda, but I think I'm going to go ahead and do that anyway. And I see every...all the chairs are taken, so everybody's present, but just for the record, please say that you're here or present when I call your name. Edwin Ace Acevedo? Scott Butler?
Here.
Jeffrey Horni?
Here.
Chuck Genitis?
Genitis.
Genitis is here. Christina...Christine Moody?
Here.
Okay, it is Christine, right? Okay. Brenda Stokes?
Here.
And Tom Vivalo?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first item of business is swearing in of the individual planning commissioners. You're not official until you're sworn in, and to do that task, we have Jim Williams, the assistant city clerk, to do that, and I'm going to turn it over to her to swear you in. I think you're going to do all of them at the same time? Okay.
See things up. So, and basically you won't have to read the entire thing. We'll ask the stand, raise your right hand, we'll say aye. I'll pause, and you each state your name. I'll continue to read the oath, and then at the end if you agree to the oath, then I'll ask the stand, "I do so swear, so help me God." I'm going to be that innocent. So.
Aye.
Aye. Edwin Ace Acevedo?
A citizen of Jackson County, State of Georgia, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will well, truly, and faithfully perform and discharge the duties devolved upon me as a planning and zoning commission member of the City of Houston, Georgia, that I will faithfully enforce the law of the city, that I will support and defend the charter of the City of Houston, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America, and that I will do all in my power to promote the general welfare and enhancement of the City of Houston and the common interest thereof. I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. Thank you. If you would all find the oath in writing here, make a copy for your act of fact, sit back to the next meeting, and we'll get them filed and then we'll...
You're not going to make a notarization?
I'm not.
Thank you. Okay, congratulations. We can get started then. The next item on the agenda is the election of the chair and vice chair. There's two officers of the planning commission, and this is something that happens according to the regulations on an annual basis. A person who is elected chair or vice chair can be reelected without any kind of term limitation. Process that we follow for this is we will first call for nominations for the position of chair. We will then see if there's additional nominations, then the procedure is to close the nominations. And then, I don't think there's any set rule about how we vote. If you prefer to vote by ballot, we can do that, or we can just do it in the open. Normally, we would do it in the open. There's not much, if anything, for people to hide here. And then we'll proceed with the vice chair with doing the same thing, basically. There's no other positions on the planning commission. The secretary is basically me, and you don't have an assigned member to be a secretary, or you don't have any money, so you don't have a secretary either. So, it's just these two positions. So, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for the position of chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I hear any?
I will nominate Christine Moody for chair.
Okay. And by the way, when...I'm going to repeat things because I'm taking notes and running the meeting at the same time, and I don't know all of your names, so I'm going to say that motion was made by...and then you help me with that because I can't even see all of your names, actually. It'll take me a little while to learn them. So, it was Ace that made the motion, that Christina...or Christine?
Moody.
Moody. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay.
Jeff Horni.
By Jeff Horni. Okay. Are there any other nominations for the position of chair? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, is a motion to close nominations in order. Okay, we have a motion to close nominations?
I'll second it.
We have a second? Any discussion on that item? All those in favor of the motion? Okay, it's unanimous to close nominations. Then, by virtue of the fact that we have one nominee, I don't think we have to vote, but let's go ahead and vote anyway. All those in favor of Mrs. Moody becoming the chair of the planning commission, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Okay, so Christine Moody is the chair of the planning commission. I'll go ahead and do now for the position of vice chair. Is there a motion? Is there a nomination for the position of vice chair? Anyone?
Yeah, I'll nominate Ace.
Okay. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Is there anyone else who would like to make a nomination for vice chair? Is anyone like to motion to close the nominations? Okay, there's a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? Any discussion on that? All those in favor of closing nominations? It's unanimous, okay. And then, seeing that we have one nomination for vice chair, we will go straight to the vote for that. All those in favor of Ace as the vice chairman? Please raise your hand. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay. All right, so we're done with that task then. Thank you for your help with that. As I said, I'll turn this meeting over to the chair to run, but I will say a couple of things first. This is a public hearing. All of these items are public hearings, and if you've never run a public hearing and you don't know Robert's Rules of Order, then I'll, at any time, if you want me to really just proceed with it, I will. And I'm hopeful that we will have, in our June meeting, that we will have a training on Robert's Rules of Order and how to conduct public hearings and so forth. I've got a pretty lengthy presentation. Even if we have no other agenda items, then we may or may not, then we'd like to spend that time with training, so everybody should know generally how the public meetings are run. So, I'll just summarize. Basically, what we do is we have a zoning procedures section in the zoning ordinance, and what it says is that we give equal time to those in favor and those against. And so, what we do is we first call the item, and then we open up the public hearing on that item, and we call for the applicant to speak first. Well, after the planning staff may make a presentation to give you some background information and a recommendation on the matter. And then, once we do that, then we go to the applicant, and the applicant is given, basically, we allow 10 minutes per side, basically. That can be changed if needed, depending on the circumstances. But we have 10 minutes, and then the applicant can get up, and anybody else who wants to speak in favor of the request follows the person, the applicant, or their representative. And then, we go to the other side, and we ask for those speaking in opposition to the request, and we give them 10 minutes as well to speak on that side of things. And then, we can also allow, if an applicant has not used their time and they want to reserve time for rebuttal, we allow, usually, the rule, at least in Jefferson, is three minutes. We give you three...up to three minutes to rebut any issues that are presented by any people who are in opposition to the request. Then, once we do that, we make...we close the meeting. We close the public hearing portion of the agenda, and we turn it back over to the chair, and the chair deliberates, and the planning commissioners ask questions, maybe of staff or so on and so forth. And you can, by the way, during a presentation by the applicant, it's appropriate at that time, if you have questions, to go ahead and ask those questions. We want to be careful about how much...we don't penalize the applicant's 10 minutes because they're answering questions, so we kind of watch the time there. But they can...you can answer...sorry, you can ask questions of anyone, the applicant or anyone on their team, if you want. And you can also ask those at a later time, but it's best before we close the public hearing, try and get any questions that you have for the applicant out there. And you can recognize someone in opposition, too, and ask them questions as well. So, if you want, Madam Chairman, I'll run that part of it tonight, just to save you, and then when you have some training under your belt, and you feel more comfortable with it, seeing how it's working, then you'll be able to handle that the next time. So, I'll go ahead and plan on doing that then. Okay, any procedural questions or agenda questions before we get started on the public hearing items?
Dr. Whites?
Yes. And you can all call me Jerry if you want.
Okay.
It's not necessary to call me Dr. Whites.
As we're going through these individual ordinances, would it be appropriate if we feel like there might be some opportunities to change something other than what's emboldened and underlying?
Yes.
Okay.
You can.
Thank you.
The parts that are bold and underlying in the ordinance amendments are only those that I've come up with, and the whole section is in order for possible revision, if you'd like. Okay, then, hearing no other...any other questions? Okay, Ace?
Jerry, just a question, so, and maybe you're going to address this later. So, as we come to decisions on planning and zoning issues, you're going to represent those at the city council meeting. You'll reflect our position. Is that a true statement?
Yes, it is. What I would tend to do is the planning staff makes his own recommendation. That would be, we put on the agenda the agenda item, and then the planning staff recommendation, and now we'll add to that planning and zoning commission's recommendation. So, it'll be on the agenda physically. That way, we don't have to, if for some reason we forget to...
Right.
Say that, then it's a matter of the record. And then, whatever draft minutes, either draft minutes will be produced for the city council. Hopefully, that's what we'll do.
And you're going to present those at the city council meeting on our behalf, and when you do that, would you also include how the vote went, or is it just going to be that we approved it or we didn't approve it? Recommended, sorry. I know we don't approve, but we recommend or not recommend.
Yeah, my tendency would be to show it on the agenda as your concluding recommendation, and not go beyond that in terms of vote or discussion or rationale, but that we will provide the draft minutes, and they won't be approved minutes, but we'll provide draft minutes for the benefit of the city council, because otherwise, I mean, they want to benefit from your work, and so if they can't see what you did, then it's kind of meaningless. So, we want to give them fairly, not super detailed minutes, but reflecting discussion and so forth, not just a simple motion of approval, we hope. Okay. How many people are on the planning staff? You're looking at them. That's it, you're in. Okay. And it's part-time, part-time, too. Other questions? Okay, all right. So then, let's go to item number four on the agenda and call this up for public hearing. This is ordinance TA for text amendment 2024-02. This is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Houston, Georgia, Article 4, zoning districts and official zoning map, Section 408 PUD, planned unit development district, to amend existing provisions, requirements, and allowances, and to add requirements and for other purposes. So, we're going to hereby open this item up for public hearing, and I'd like to start with a little bit of background and go ahead and explain some about this ordinance. And so, let me do that now, and then we'll open it up for hearing, or you can ask me questions as I go. I don't know how much anybody knows, so I'm going to be pretty much as basic as I can, but a planned unit development district is one of the many zoning districts in the city, and it's the most flexible zoning district. It's not put on a map unless someone comes in and asks for it and the city council approves it. It's intended to be more flexible than other zoning districts. If you read the purpose and intent, it talks about a lot of flexibility, allowing mixtures of land uses, mixtures of housing types, allowing flexibility with regard to so-called dimensional requirements like density or lot size or building setbacks, things of that nature. And so, the...first of all, the city council initiate...they voted to initiate this request as well as the other two amendments that are on the agenda. And we did not give them...they did not give us specific instructions, or did we give them specific concerns when we asked or responded to this? But I can tell you that we've had a lot of experience with this district. It's been very popular. It was written by me in the zoning ordinance back in 2016, and it was written for maximum flexibility in order to get Twin Lakes, the Colter development, into the city. And so, it was very unrestricted. It's not...did not nail down a lot of things. It was intentionally vague and permissive and flexible in nature. Well, now that we've done Twin Lakes PUD, and we've got several others that have come in, it's been a very popular mechanism for development in the city, and we've learned a lot, and we've seen, quite frankly, we've seen abuses to what was intended. The flexibility has been used to try and get development, in some cases, they've been granted development approval, for things that were never really envisioned by the land use plan, comprehensive plan, et cetera. So, I don't want to dwell on all of it because we would generally expect you to have looked at these in advance, but I do want to hit some of the highlights here, and I'd also want to thank Christina Brown, council member, who is in the audience tonight, and I'm glad that she's here because she had some input on this, and it was helpful in terms of trying to begin to frame the discussion about what might be needed. And this does not in any means reflect her work. She's going to have ample opportunity to weigh in on it. It's not like it was her work or anything, and I did not consult her in advance, but, you know, she has the role to play once it gets to her. So, basically, I think what we're trying to do with this is close some loopholes and curb the abuses that we're seeing here. One of the things that I think...and feel free, by the way, to question, criticize, disagree, recommend rejection of any of this, because that's what you're here to do, and it's not...you're not a rubber stamping committee. You've been appointed because the council wants to have your input on it, not just that of the city planner. So, the first part of it, if you look at page two of the amendment, it talks about traditional neighborhood development. You may not know what that means in planner terms, but it means short blocks, rectangular patterns with short streets, and it's mostly a non-suburban type pattern, although this says you can still do suburban type, curb streets and so forth. What I think this amendment tries to do is, first of all, you're allowed all sorts of uses, and you come in as an applicant and propose the uses that you want, and then if they're approved by the city council, then that's what you get. But what we're seeing, like, for example, we had one application that was nothing but apartments. Well, it had a brew pub in the bottom floor of one proposal. You may, if you've been around, you know what that was. It was 200 units that were proposed on 10 acres for a density of over 20 units per acre, when the maximum that we have is 12 units per acre. And so, what we've done here is say, let's tie this back to the purposes, and let's have you apply for and respond to what the purposes of this district are. And if you can't show that you've met many of those, then you don't have a very good application, and you deserve to be denied. So, that's kind of the general purpose that we're looking at here, saying that you really ought to incorporate non-residential uses and civic uses into the design, and that if you only have one type of residential unit or only residential uses, then that may be grounds to deny it. We...Christina and I had talked about whether we ought to make that a requirement, and I think it's kind of difficult to really make it a requirement that you have to mix uses in every single event, but this, I think, is strong enough to suggest, hey, it could be grounds...if you're just trying to do a single function development, then, you know, ask for multifamily or ask for commercial. Don't ask for a PUD and try and just get advantages that way. So, I don't want to go on too long, but if I go to page three, some of the biggest abuses, I think, that we had were building height. We're limited here under the zoning ordinance to three stories. Question?
Is it saying page three?
Page three of ordinance 24-02.
So, but down here, page three or page two?
Yeah, down here at the bottom.
Okay.
Page three.
Okay.
It's paragraph four, dimensional requirements.
Okay.
That's where I am.
Another one, building height. You know, we've had the council approve four-story buildings. We've had applicants asking for four-story buildings. Look around what we have, especially like the one where we had the apartments. Everything around it is single-story buildings. So, building height is one thing that I think we should cap that at three, unless you're doing a mixed-use development, then maybe we'll give you another floor on there. Density, I think we really need to limit the density to 12 units per acre, which is the maximum you can have in the multifamily zoning district, although, yeah, and then in other cases, there would be a density limit of up to 150% of the density recommended in the comprehensive plan, and we could get into that if you want. Here's another one on page three of item 4C, and you don't have to agree with me, and this may be even a little bit controversial, is I'm suggesting that we not approve any lot sizes smaller than 5,000 square feet and a... is close some loopholes and curb the abuses that we're seeing here. One of the things that I think, and feel free, by the way, to question, criticize, disagree, recommend rejection of any of this because that's what you're here to do. And it's not, you're not a rubber stamping committee. You're, you've been appointed because the council wants to have your input on it, not just that of the city planner. So, the first part of it, if you look at page two of the amendment, it talks about traditional neighborhood development. You may not know what that means in planner terms, but it means short blocks, rectangular patterns with short, short streets. And, and it's mostly a non-suburban type pattern, although this says you can still do suburban type curved streets and so forth. What I think this amendment tries to do is, first of all, you're allowed all sorts of uses and you come in as an applicant and propose the uses that you want. And then, if they're approved by the city council, then that's what you get. But, what we're seeing, like, for example, we had one application that was nothing but apartments. Well, it had a brew pub in the bottom floor of one proposal. You may, if you've been around, you know what that was. It was 200, 200 units that were proposed on 10 acres for a density of over 20 units per acre, when the maximum that we have is 12 units per acre. And so, what we've done here is say, let's tie this back to the purposes and let's have you apply for and respond to what the purposes of this district are. And if you can't show that you've met many of those, then, then you don't have a very good application. You deserve to be denied. So, that's kind of the, the general purpose that we're looking at here, saying that you really ought to incorporate non-residential uses and civic uses into the design. And if you only have one type of residential unit or only residential uses, then that may be grounds to deny it. We, Christina and I had talked about whether we ought to make that a requirement. And I think it's kind of difficult to really make it a requirement that you have to mix uses in every single event. But, this, I think, is strong enough to suggest, hey, it could be grounds, if you're, if you're just trying to do a single function development, then, you know, ask for multifamily or ask for commercial. Don't ask for a PUD and try and just get advantages that way. So, I don't want to go on too long, but if I go to page three, some of the biggest abuses, I think, that we had were building height. We're, we're limited here under the zoning ordinance to three stories. Question? Uh, page three of ordinance 24-02.
So, but down here, page three or page two?
Yeah, down here at the bottom.
Okay.
Page three.
Okay.
It's paragraph four, dimensional requirements.
Okay.
That's where I am. Another one, building height, you know, we've had the council approve four-story buildings. We've had applicants asking for four-story buildings. Look around what we have, especially like the one where we had the apartments. Everything around is a single-story building. So, building height is one thing that I think we should cap that at three unless you're doing a mixed-use development. Then we'll, then maybe we'll give you another floor on there. Density, I think we really need to limit the density to 12 units per acre, which is the maximum you can have in the multifamily zoning district. Although, yeah, and then in other cases that you, there would be a density limit of up to 150% of the density recommended in the comprehensive plan. And we could get into that if you want. Here's another one on page three of item 4C. And you don't have to agree with me. And this may be even a little bit controversial. Is, I'm suggesting that we not approve any lot sizes smaller than 5,000 square feet and a lot width of 50 feet. We have quite a few lots in Twin Lakes. Twin Lakes goes 40, 50, 60, 70. The, the Providence planned unit development that we council approved a preliminary plat on last night, that has 40-foot lot widths, 50, 60, 70. And I, you can, you can debate that. We can argue about how, how people have preference for smaller lots, narrow lots. I'm just giving you what, I think, now that we've approved a lot of stuff, that, that's probably as small as I think we need to go. Question here and then over to Scott.
Question, comment. For those who don't know, could you say what these standard dimensions are for a half-acre lot to give them perspective?
A half-an-acre lot is 20,000 square feet or so, 21,780, which is a half-an acre. And if you do the dimensions on that, a 100-foot lot width by 200-foot would be a 20,000-square-foot lot area or almost a half-an acre. So, 50-foot wide is basically, you're, you're looking at a quarter, a quarter-acre lot, maybe smaller. Scott, then, hey.
Um, based on my experience with a family member that lives in a PUD with very small lot lines, I, I, on this particular section, I wrote down, would it be possible to consider the number of bedrooms in lot width and driveway length? Because as we're experiencing in some single-family subdivisions, you may have a four-bedroom house that has four to eight adults living in it, meaning there's four to eight cars that really negates even having sidewalks because you've got cars parked in the sidewalk, you've got cars parked on both sides of the street. And it makes it difficult then, from a safety perspective, to visualize children that might be running out into the street after a loose ball or a car pulling out from their driveway that's got cars on both sides of the streets. And I'm, I'm in agreement completely that no lot should be less than 50 feet wide. And would it be worth considering that if it's a four-bedroom house, that the minimum could be 60 feet wide with a 40-foot driveway so that at least four cars could be parked in the driveway and not on the street? I just bring that up as a consideration to discuss.
Yeah. Quick response to it. I, I think that's more detailed than we want to try and get in this code because we are, it is a planned unit development designed to promote some flexibility. You can always establish your own recommendations on things of that nature, but trying to put that down exactly in paper, on paper to apply everywhere, I'd be a little reluctant to try and do that myself. Okay.
So, just to piggyback on what he's saying, and I want to make sure I understand that, and I agree with you, we don't want to put too many details in it, but it still allows us as a, as a board the flexibility if, you know, somebody comes in, "I want to build 500 homes", and they say, "Oh, I'm going to put a 15-foot driveway", we can say, "Yeah, no, that's not going to happen. We want a 28-foot driveway." But, we have that flexibility when they, when they come to us. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, we have wide, wide latitude to make recommendations to raise concerns about any of this. And in fact, the, there is something in here. If you look at F, there's a, there is another one, which, again, I hesitate a little bit to put a hard and fast rule in here, but a setback of 20 feet from the right-of-way of the street.
Sure.
That that ought to be, even for, even for commercial development that's running on a, on a road, I still think you ought to set it back. So, you're going to need room for easements, landscaping, et cetera. And so, that will at least take care of the building. Now, you know, parking, I agree with Scott. That, you know, there's other issues that you need to look at.
And then I have another point. If we can go back to paragraph 4A on the, the height limit, does that, is the city exempt for that? And where I'm going with that, so like, did the water towers have to be approved separately? Because they obviously exceed four stories in height. Those types of.
Well, it won't, it won't be in a PUD district.
So, this is only applying to PUDs, not to anything else? That's the water towers and those kind of things come under a separate?
Yeah, they'd be in a separate zoning district and the, and the allowance for something like that, they come under a general exception, a water, a water tower is under an exception to the height rule anyway. And so, it would be allowed to be 100 feet or 200 feet tall. Okay, other questions?
I have a question, but forgive me if it's a rookie question.
It's okay.
Would these, these changes affect like Twin Lakes or any developments that are already approved and are in the building?
No. Would, it, it'd be difficult to see a, a way where any of this will affect adversely any approved planned unit developments. They'll be so-called grandfathered in.
So, I want to piggyback on that as, as well. So, I know in last night's meeting and in the working session, there was discussion, if not disagreement. And I, and I'm a novice, so I don't know. And I believe when you were presenting about the private road versus the public road, there was a difference between development approval and plat approval. And I'm not clear what the difference is if, because I want to make sure I understand that, what that, what the difference is and what it allows us and what it doesn't allow us. And I just don't know.
Okay, I can answer it. It's a little bit more lengthy than I would like to be. But, basically, in the case of that planned unit development, they had, they got zoned for a project. They presented a site plan. It showed 334 units. It showed what their lot sizes were, et cetera, et cetera. And then, but they, that was at the zoning stage and the plan that they present is a conceptual one in nature. And it's not a hard and fast, like, once they got that approved, although, they made the argument and they got lawyers, high-priced lawyers, by the way, to come in and say, "Well, we're, once you approve that, we're, we have to follow that and you must, and you must allow that." Well, I, that's where I disagree because we have a preliminary plat process and that is another stage after zoning where you do the detailed review and see if they meet all of the standards. And my point, and it comes out in this, it's, it's a relevant point, question to ask because this code amendment responds in many ways to that. And it says, you, we expect you to follow your plan if you get a PUD approved. However, you still have to go through other processes. And it doesn't mean that we reviewed your plan for every single thing in the code at that time. They don't have to, they don't have to show they meet everything in the code. And we don't look to it to see that they met everything. And that's the rub, that was the rub of these applicants was they had stuff down on paper and they said, "Well, you know, we, we got that approved and nobody said no, so you got to prove it." And that's where we disagree. So, does that help you some or?
To some extent, but, so, the development is totally different from the plat approval? They're two separate actions?
Well, the re, it was a rezoning.
It was a rezoning.
Change of zoning district from, say, agricultural to planned unit development. And the, the PUD that we're discussing here is, has more requirements to it and it has more specificity. You have to have a plan and you have to tell us what your so-called dimensions of development are, height and things like that. But it, but it's not the, it's not the end-all, end-all. There's, if you get that, then you go to the next step and that is the preliminary plat. And then after that, there's a development plan. We can go further in, in a future meeting on exactly how these, all, all these processes work and what they do.
Is, would it be safe to say, Jerry, that a zoning is a classification of what can be built on that piece of land? And then the actual plat and the plan is what's actually going to be put there? Two different things. One, the broad category, like, I'm going to build cars in a car plant and then I come and say, "I'm actually going to build trucks that meet these specifications in that plant."
Kind of, I mean, what, when you rezone property, that gives them the permission for the uses.
Mm-huh.
Uh, it tells you what uses are allowed and not allowed. And then, it, it usually establishes, let's say, a maximum density of number of units. But then, when it comes down to how you design that, like, is the road going to be a curved street? Is it cul-de-sac or is it going to be a connecting street? Is it going to be a private street? Is it going to be a public street? Those kind of questions are not normally nailed down at the time of a zoning there, even a planned unit development. At least that's my opinion. Other questions? Okay, good questions because they're, yeah.
Can I ask about F?
Sure.
Down there?
Yeah.
25 feet from any exterior property line. Is that the, my neighbor's property? Are you talking exterior property line for the development? Is that, what are we talking about?
Exterior property line for the development itself. The property that.
Okay, so not, not within the development?
No, no, not within the development itself, but the exterior property line of what you got resowned would be 25. Others?
On item E, the square footage and the heated square footage is my question. And if I remember correctly, Ms. Brown, when the gentleman was looking for these apartments up here next to the soccer field or the townhomes, I remember she brought to the attention of the city council or to the developer, they didn't have the minimum square footage heated. But I thought it was more than this 1,400 squares. So, we reduced it since that meeting?
No, no, that was for a fee simple townhouse under, under those rules. Now, the, and it was 1,800 square feet and that's what he did not meet. And so, he had to come back and change that. But that's a diff, that's a, a fee simple townhouse project in an MU mixed-use zoning district. It's not a PUD. So, a different set of rules would be applied.
So, would, so under these rules, if these dwellings would have 400 square feet less heated space than the gentleman next to the soccer field and those places?
Well, um.
Is that, I'm, I'm, I, I remember the 1,800 square feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Brown? So, so this is, this is taking 400 square, we're making our homes 400 square feet less in this ordinance?
No, not necessarily. Uh, this is setting a, a floor for, no pun intended, a minimum of what you can do, this is absolute minimum. Now, if you came in with a PUD and you said, "I want to do fee simple townhouses", the first thing we're going to point out is, well, according to our code, unless you're, unless we give you some sort of a different approval, it's 1,800 square feet with a two-car garage. So, we'll, we're going to expect you to follow that unless you propose something different, you persuade us and the council approves.
I guess I'm, I'm still confused. I'm, 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 so, what we had next to the soccer field?
Yeah.
Those are not PUDs?
No.
But those are mixed use?
It was an MU zoning district.
Okay. So, I guess my question really is, excluding apartments, what is the smallest amount of square footage of a home that we can have within the city limits? Is it this 1,400? Is this the smallest?
No.
We can go smaller than 1,400 square feet for a home?
Yeah, it, it varies based on the zoning district and I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me, but.
Yeah, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Jerry. I really don't. I'm just, because I don't know. I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I wrote it, but I don't remember why. But, I, I think under the agricultural district, for example, we allow a smaller lot size, maybe under 1,000 square feet. Uh, we allow in the apartment zoning district, uh, multifamily is 700 square feet. So, we're really actually increasing that. In the PUD, if you wanted to do apartments in a PUD, you'd have to have 750, whereas if you go in a multifamily district outright without conditions and zoning, you'd have to build it only 700 square feet.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So, back to his question, the 1,400 square feet, he said if it was a townhome that they would have to meet 1,800. I was wondering, with so many question here that it says, "In 1,400 square feet for any other dwelling unit", could they make an argument saying, "I'm a PUD, I'm a townhome, doesn't say I can't, that, that falls under my other dwelling unit"?
Well, nobody can, can claim that they're in a PUD district unless they get rezoned to a PUD district. So, that, that in itself won't be an issue.
Okay.
All right, good questions. Other questions? Okay, well, go ahead, Scott.
So, my concern, based on comments I've heard from people that are in the PUD that we currently have in Houston, is with the small backyards and the lack of park space or green space for children to play, there ends up getting to be baseballs that hit neighbors' houses, soccer balls that hit neighbors' houses, et cetera. Would, and I know we could ask for this in a public hearing that comes up, but on three, on the top of page three, right above paragraph four, it talks about a, um, greens and squares should be spatially defined and distributed throughout the PUD so that no residential lot is more than a reasonable walking distance of 1,350 feet from a green square park. Would it be possible that, but that maybe that is in between backyards so that if I'm a parent and my two kids want to go out and play, they don't have to walk a quarter of a mile away where I can't see them, they could be out in the backyard, so to speak, and where we could actually watch our children, see what's going on, rather than the green space for them to play in being a quarter of a mile away? Would that be something, I mean, I know we could ask for that, but it would be something that, in other words, I, I, from what I hear, that's the kind of thing that people that buy homes are looking for. And I don't mind being in a small lot. I want to see, be able to see my children play safely while I'm cooking dinner or sitting on my back porch and being able to watch my children.
Yeah. I see your point. I don't know how to put it in effect.
I don't either.
I don't know how to write something like that.
In the old days, when the mills would make a mill town, they would put all their mill houses in squares and then in between the backyards would be a green space.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that the kids could play in the back and the parents could still watch them.
Yeah.
You have to forgive me for growing up.
And we're designing that so where the rear block is open space. And so, that, a lot of times, we're going to get that. We do, right, and leave that for a case-by-case basis and evaluate and get that done.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, others? Okay, well, let me wrap up my part of it on here. There, there is quite a few things here and maybe since we're generating discussion whether maybe I should drill down a little bit more on it, too. But, you've had a chance to look at it, so I don't want to, we have other items on the agenda, too, so. I want to point out on page four, under 6D, the development plan, this was the point I was making earlier about how the applicants for Providence, they wanted to argue that they, they had a plan, they got it approved and therefore, and they had to follow it and therefore, there was no other way they could deviate from it. And I think that this begins to flesh out the fact that we expect you to follow your development plan, but there are other modifications that get done through the preliminary plating process and development plan approval process. And so, you, you can't argue that because it. argue that because it, there's no, nobody said anything about it during the rezoning, that you're entitled to break the law. You're not allowed to do that. So that's what, that's what B would do. Um, oh, and then let me wrap up with a, a couple of other things here, on, on the bottom of page five and then six of this amendment, um, I think we should require a traffic study for one of these developments, uh, unless it's a small addition to an, an existing PUD of less than five acres. Um, and that way we get a better understanding of what it is, and they're, and they're gonna be serious too, if they have to spend money on a traffic study, they're not gonna just throw something together and give it to us. Another one is, and, and this goes to the whole discussion about, um, uh, really about the owner, ownership versus rental and the problem, I'm looking at H at the bottom of five, um, that we want them to tell us what they're gonna do, what, what are their expectations for ownership versus rental? Be specific. Tell us what that is and then tell us how you're going to control that. We're not telling them they can't have rentals, but if they're gonna propose that, they need to tell us what, um, what are the, what are the assurances that these percentages that if, if there's a minimum homeowner occupied, um, what is that and how are they gonna assure us that that will take place?
So, so Jerry, if, we'll just take Allmont Farms, for example, and correct me if I'm wrong, the current developer is a third developer for that piece of property, is it, and if developer number one says, "I'm gonna have twenty percent of these homes are gonna be built to rent," does that requirement move to each developer or does a new developer come in there and says, "Nope, I'm not doing that, I'm gonna make them all rentals"?
It runs with the land, not the owner.
It runs with the land, so that's captured, so, you know, Jerry's development company says twenty percent and then Ace's development company buys that, there's a legal, some type of legal mechanism that follows that in there?
Yeah, yeah, there's conditions, the conditions of planned unit development approval are gonna set out the broad parameters for what they can and can't do, and if they sell it, the, the, the buyer is bound by those same rules.
So, when it says that they'll specify, you know, in here, and they make their pitch to us, that's, that's a binding contract at some point or somewhere, it gets, it gets captured? There's no flexibility for the second developer to come in there and change the rules?
It has-
Without coming to us or city council?
Well, it has to be in writing and we have to pin that down-
Okay.
-through conditions of zoning. Sometimes we do it as simply as, uh, we say, "Your development shall be in quote substantial accordance with the letter of intent and the site plan that you submitted." That way substantial accordance is a little bit vague, but, um, that means you're, we're nailing down what you said and you have to follow that, it's, it's basically a condition of approval.
Thanks.
Ultimately, isn't it the, up to the homeowners association of that particular neighborhood, though, to ma, manage the number of rentals?
It's the only way that we know of really to, uh, put something like that into effect. I mean, you can write it and say it, but then how do you enforce it?
Right.
And it would have to be, uh, I mean, the city, let's be honest, the city with a, is not gonna send the building inspector into a home and count the number of people there or, you know, make sure that they're not renters and that they're owners. You know, we're, we may be obligated to enforce it because we made it a condition, but the, the real enforcement mechanism is gonna have to be internally by the homeowners association.
They would put in their covenants and restrictions. You see a lot of developments that have, especially when you get into condominium developments, they'll typically have cap on, um, owner rentals, a lot of them run twenty percent and then, you know, somebody's saying, "Cause we would sell property to, that would be one question, say, "I'm looking to buy investment, there are caps in this community, yeah, they're already there, okay, my guys are not gonna buy it."
But I, I guess my concern is, if the HOA is in Baltimore, Maryland, over a development here in Houston, Georgia, how enforceable are they gonna, or how much are they gonna put into enforcing the rule?
It would be a private party that would go and raise the stink and take it to civil court. That's, that's really about being able to make a deal.
So, oh, go ahead. It's, so I guess what my concern is, we've got investors, this was just in Economy Magazine two days ago, are snatching up twenty percent of all the homes, basically starter homes under four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the United States, and they're restricting the ability of our citizens to create generational wealth by building a home and staying in it and creating equity and passing that down. And so, I, I, I remember my grandfather, as I was a little kid, going around with him, when he had homes that he rented to people, it was always, "In twenty-four months, you're going to buy this house." In other words, my grandfather created a pathway to homeownership rather than burdening people with a lifetime of renting. And I'm wondering if there's not some way that the city of Houston could say, "If you're gonna build a, build to rent community, there's got to be a pathway to ownership for those folks so that we can help citizens start to build some sort of generational wealth in their lives, rather than just send all of the money to Canada's teachers union or BlackRock or whoever it is or Ace's rental business." I, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, 'cause it's not the government, it's not the city of Houston that's restricting homeownership, it's the teachers' union or BlackRock, this, and, and what I think we should try to do is provide a way to provide homeownership for people rather than restrict it. I don't, that's just a comment I have.
So, and, and I know we're not gonna solve this here, Jerry, the whole build to rent is, is a relatively new phenomenon across the country, and I've been trying to read articles about it as well, and I, and I believe it's Colorado that's trying to introduce legislation, and I don't know whether that can be done at the city level, that build to rent communities after twenty-four months, consecutive months of renting, the corporation has to offer the home for sale to the renter at fair market value. I, I, and we, maybe we're not there that, maybe we need our city attorney to come in here and help us, 'cause, you know, I don't wanna just throw stuff out, but to your point, I think it's something we need to address, we're not gonna solve it tonight, obviously, um, but it's a concern. I think it's a concern to the entire city. Uh, my concern with build to rents is that they're not gonna get a hundred percent occupancy and then that forces the developers to look at other options, whether that's section eight housing to fill in, 'cause they're not making money if nobody's living there. That's the reality of it. And, and I think we wanna, you know, present the community to, to grow and develop and to be a, more of a middle-class, upper-middle-class city, and I think that's where we wanna go with that. Just wanna protect, and again, I appreciate everything you're saying, 'cause, you know, I think probably we might be catching off guard a little bit, but it's, it's an issue that we gotta look at long-term, I think.
Yeah, well, that, that issue is very much front and center for the city officials in Houston and Jefferson and all over the place. Um, and so, it's an issue that I think we all should feel committed to studying further, thank you for doing research on it. Uh, we don't have currently good answers, um, to exactly what we can do, so I'm glad to hear that there's some idea, like, you know, twenty-four months before you have to offer it for sale. Um, unfortunately, in Georgia, we have a general assembly that wants to go the other way. They've been considering a bill that would, uh, outlaw any sort of restrictions on build to rent communities. So they, we, they're kinda, they've tried to go in the opposite direction, they haven't approved anything, but, I mean, short story is, it's an important issue, stay on it, we will stay on it, it's bigger than just this amendment. We wanna start with that by, by inserting it in the conversation, if we get a PUD, that this is an issue, this gives us enough to start saying, "Hey, you better start telling us what you wanna do and we're not gonna let you just flip a PUD to go all rental, um, you're gonna have to explain what you wanna do and we're gonna nail you down to that." And so, let's take it in a little bit shorter steps, smaller bites, and, uh, do what we can with the PUD, but recognizing we're not gonna shy away from the issue.
So by putting some-
Christina's in the audience, I promised her that, that she, that we are going to do something about that, we just don't have all the answers yet.
And by putting some of these things in place, like the explanation of how you, how's the property gonna be, how many rentals are you going to have, may deter people from saying, "You know, this just ain't worth the hassle, let's go to Hall County, let's go to Walton, let's go, we're not gonna mess with Jackson County anymore," or the city of Houston, so-
Might work that way.
It could, it could deter people, you know, in the long run, that you're gonna do. Um, I'd be interested to see what Colorado does with that, 'cause I'm thinking private property rights attorneys are gonna be all over that one.
Very well could be, yeah.
It'd be interesting.
Yeah, all right, others?
Home number nine, in, uh, section one, we talk about PUDs being allowed to be ten acres. Would, would it make sense to raise, you know, it used to be a hundred acres, and then we had a special request to knock it down to ten, um, would it maybe make more sense to, to raise that to fifty acres or twenty-five, where you really could have varied, variable type plans?
You can, and you can make that, if the commission wants to make that recommendation, you can make it. Uh, in my experience, I think ten, ten is, uh, big enough to be able to make stuff like that happen, uh, mixed use, and, uh, so I think that, that's my recommendation, I'm okay with it. I don't think it was just a matter of, um, here in Houston that we dropped it to ten because one of our applicants got, had ten acres. Uh, so I don't think it was, uh, I, I think it's a pretty good, uh, code, but when you guys get to discussing this further, you can certainly consider that, uh, if you wanna make, make a recommendation to increase that size. Okay, so that's, uh, then, I've gone through the ordinance and then I wanna, um, for, for the benefit of the public now, uh, I wanna ask, now, is there anyone, I've spoken in favor of the request or introducing it as applicant, is there any el, anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the amendment? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the requested amendment? Okay, seeing none, uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing on ordinance TA twenty-four oh two and turn it back over to the, uh, planning and zoning commission for additional questions, comments, discussion, or a motion if it's appropriate.
I've got one comment, it's administrative in nature, I think, uh, maybe for our follow-on meetings, like city council, uh, work sessions, we have a, a podium and a microphone available for the public, 'cause if, there's nothing there, if somebody in the public speaks, they can't, nobody on the YouTube or the TV would be able to hear, just an admin thing.
One point, yeah, we should have that in the future. Okay, I know we already had some discussion on it, but the floor is open for additional discussion, suggestions, yeah?
Um, I may have missed it, but is there anything in here stating with the PUD continuing, like making sure the developer is in charge of sidewalks or the larger sidewalks for a golf cart path tying, you know, you gotta keep funneling down here so we're not putting that on the city system?
I'm not sure I get your question exactly.
So, we're talking about the size of the lot-
Yeah.
...and what the size of the building is-
Right.
-um, say, outside of the neighborhood, depending on how they're zoned, I know that some have been responsible at this point of putting in a sidewalk for pedestrians or such. I don't see anything in here at this time causing that in the PUD, that's what it's going to be.
Um, well, the way the PUD works is that it does, it, it's a license to get some exceptions to the rule, but generally speaking, uh, you, you still have to follow all of the other rules unless you've made a specific allowance to vary or modify it. So, in the case of sidewalks, if you build a public street, we require sidewalks on both sides of the street. If you, um, are building along a current highway, uh, state route fifty-three, for example, uh, we, in almost every case, require that you build a, a sidewalk or even a multi-use path along that, um, along that highway. So they're, they're, they're there, they're just not, those requirements are not spelled out in this amendment or in the PUD zoning district itself.
I have a question, I mean, what about the, the things that we've already discussed? For instance, the, you know, parts of N A district, uh, if, how would we get those incorporated into this form? Or if we approve it, then what would we do to confirm the rule, some of the other?
Uh, well, tonight, we wanna make, we want your recommendation on whether to approve this amendment or if not, uh, any sort of changes that you make, so the time is now to, um, basically talk about any kind of major changes that you wanna make, and then, um, anything else that's larger than that agenda item will just have to wait for a future meeting or we can, you guys can have influence over what your agendas say too, if you want a discussion item on something, we'll put it on there for discussion. will do is they'll look at the parts of the land that they cannot develop, meaning riparian areas, steep slopes, things like that, and they'll leave that and they'll call that open space, and they'll develop the most developable parts of it and leave the rest of it as open space, and whether, whether it matches the needs and it's usable or not, a lot of times it's not. And so, I think you're getting to, uh, some sort of a design standard that we ought to put in here that says, um, um, if we don't have it already, I mean, I think it says, well, I think we've got it, I mean, look under, look under D on page two at the top, preserve the natural amenities of the land through maintenance of conservation areas and open spaces within develop, and provide more, for more usable and suitably located recreation facilities, open spaces, either commonly or publicly, than would otherwise be provided under conventional standards. So I think that, that's a design, a broad design standard that gets at work.
Okay, I, I just, that, that's fine, as long as you tell me-
So you would, you would, you as a planning commissioner, reviewing an application, you look at it and you think that they're not doing it, you say, "Well, if I got it, you're not meeting those purposes and intent, you, you, you're not, um, you're not being-"
Okay.
I'm trying to think of a word right now. You're not being consistent with it or compliant with, with that, and so we're, you know, either you need to redesign it or we're not gonna-
Right.
-we're not gonna recommend it.
And then I got one more last question and I won't say anything else, I promise. So, I, I know that with the family development in Twin Lakes and with the last plat, uh, approval request from Crestwinds, the issue of fees for lift stations came up, is, are those things, one, like, I know that Crestwinds say, "They were grandfathered in, you put that lift station in, so we don't wanna pay that fee," or is that something that we take care of or recom, or we have any involvement in that recommendations for those type of things, lift stations and those fees, or is that just strictly an engineering kinda thing, and, and how's that work?
Uh, there's no direct path for you to influence that, but, um- There's no direct path for you to influence that, but that doesn't mean you can somehow, some way. But that's basically a lift station, a sewage lift station, if you're going to do that, and the council, at the recommendation of the city engineer, said, you know, we're, look, we're going to be, these are expensive to upkeep, to maintain, and so, we're going to charge a fee. And then we got into issues about, well, we've got some already that didn't pay the fee, and we've pushed the envelope a little bit to make sure that those that have not been accepted are going to pay the fee. And that was our position last night, at the council, at the council. But you won't normally have something in terms of, I mean, if you bring up, if you want to discuss an issue like that, it's all, it's all fair to discuss. You just put it on the agenda.
Because I tend to worry about cents and dollars and property taxes and such. Wouldn't it be appropriate to possibly talk about the building permit fees? And I was doing some calculations. We're about to spend $28 million to expand our wastewater treatment plant capacity to five, five hundred thousand gallons per day. And using the lowest number that I've heard our civil engineer use, which is 160 gallons per day per house, that comes out to roughly 3,125 houses that we're going to be able to provide cap, capacity for, for that $28,000. And that's $25,000 plus the interest on the loan. So, it's 25,000 plus, excuse me, 25 million plus three million in interest. That comes out to roughly $8,000 of hard cost that the city is going to incur per house for, not just PUD developments, but all the things that have been approved. And I'm just wondering, when is it appropriate for a planning and zoning commission that looks at long-term liabilities for the city, to maybe make a recommendation that we look at tap fees more reflective of what it actually costs? Is that, is that, was that be a different, something on a different agenda, or?
Yes. Tap fees and development fees are a topic, if you want to discuss that in the future, we can put that on the agenda and give it more detail.
Because I'm just-
So, that your math, your math is assuming that it's all houses, and that it's all houses in the city of Houston. And it may be that some of that is commercial, some of that investment in sewer is going to non-residential, and it also could, very well, the city right now appears to be talking about building excess capacity for sale to-
Better can. Well, I guess what I'm looking at, we've already got 5,000 and something homes approved.
Yeah.
And this capacity that we're going to add only adds, at the minimum number of 160 gallons per day per house, 3,100, which means there's going to be another upgrade to the excess capacity of a million gallons for next five years from there or something. So, I'm just-
Well, that, you know, here's where that question comes in, is later on the agenda, in the conference of plan.
There we go. Thank you.
If we hit there.
Okay, I won't ask any more questions.
No, that's fine. I don't want to dissuade the commission to ask some questions.
Jerry, I do have one question about, in the PUD, if it is over a certain amount of acreage or something, you know, larger, that requires some type of infrastructure within that PUD, and it could include circulation, whatever, you know, the PUD would need, within their own bounds. Is there a way, or should we address any, anything like that?
Well, there, the developer, for everything that's within the development, they're going to be required to pay for that themselves with no-
Exactly. But then the upkeep and-
Yeah. That's, that's clear, that that will be the developer's obligation to address that. And it's when you get to the periphery of the development or going off-site, that we get into legal questions about whether, how much can we require that they pay for, you know, their, their off-site impacts. Does that not answer? Yeah, no doubt, we'll have that, that's, that's easy to take care of. It's when we get beyond the boundary that it becomes difficult. Don't need to, it's covered adequately. Okay. Other, other questions, comments?
Thanks for being patient with us tonight, Jerry.
Of course. I would like to say, before we approve this, that at least, to me, the, going from the 10 acres minimum use on, number nine on section one, that we do that now, at least to 25, 50.
Okay, so, since we have a specific suggestion, and I had, really in the form of a motion in a second, let's put that out there for discussion.
Can I ask one question about that, Jerry? And I'm not against it at all, but what is, what's the impact to the city by doing that? I mean, do we have 100, 10-acre parcels now, and now we're going to have a smaller amount of, I just want to know what the impact is. I'm in agreement that I'd like to see it greater myself, but I don't want to burden the city, or screw us up in some type of long-range planning that we may not know about yet.
Well, I think I'd answer it this way, and it's fair to ask, when we do all these amendments, where are the opportunities for this to go into effect in the future? And we're, we might be surprised on what might come forward. I mean, we denied the PUD for 10 acres here in the center of town, that could come back as a PUD. So, there are other opportunities in it. There's the rest of Shannon Sales property. There's other vacant pieces of property, although we, I think we, I want to say that we've almost exhausted all of our opportunities, but I wouldn't go so far as to say that. Then, what we're probably likely to have is annexations that want to come in for large-scale development, and those will come in more than likely as a PUD. And so, in that case, I mean, to answer your question, I don't think it's a terrible thing to say, if you, if you increased it from 10 to 25, I mean, what, is there anything really bad about that? Well, I mean, we've got so much growth approved already, and we've had so many of these PUDs and dwindling supply of land, that I wouldn't be so worried about taking away the right and opportunity. I mean, I stand fast on the idea that you can have a good PUD with 10 acres, but if you want to make it more restrictive than that, you can make that recommendation. I don't think I would disagree with that. I mean, I'd probably stay with my original recommendation, but that's fine, two opinions.
This would be a minimum, it's a floor.
It is a minimum, yeah.
So, are you, how do we do this procedurally, so we get out of the-
We have a, I considered it a motion made to change 10-acre minimum to 25. It was seconded, we're in discussion.
Okay.
Okay. You want to go ahead and make a call to question on that? All those in favor of the change from 10 to 25? Okay. We have, are, is, all those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So, tell me again, Stokes, Brenda Stokes? Okay, so, we have a motion to change 10, 25. The vote is six to one, with Brenda Stokes opposed. And did you vote?
I was, I'm opposed, I guess, because I was, I did the research, not after the change.
Okay. All right. I'm still learning, Sarah.
Respect.
We'll call it five to two, this is, okay. Others, that's a good way to handle other suggestions on any kind of quote tweaks to this ordinance, if you see something you want to change. That would be a good, good way to approach it, if you have others.
Thank you, Jerry.
So, then I'll make a motion to accept this change.
A motion would be in order to recommend approval of the ordinance, as written with the exception of that one change from 10 to 25 acres. Is that your motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Well said. I would second it.
Okay. To approve, move to 10. Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, amendment. Yay!
Your first item.
Okay. I think this, it deserved, it really did deserve a lot of discussion, and again, don't feel like you're laboring it by any means, because the purpose of having a planning commission is to run interference for the city council to talk about these things in more detail than they may be inclined, and to have other people's considered opinions on what to do about. So, it's totally within your right to take your time on it. Okay? Then, let's go to the next agenda item, which is ordinance TA 2403, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Houston, Article Four, zoning districts, official zoning map, Section 414, MU, mixed-use district, and for other purposes. Okay, this one is much less involved, and, but it was, it was one that was probably harder to write, honestly, than the rest of it, because I had these built up under PUD. I knew what the abuses were, and could write those down. And then, the, we don't only, we only have one MU district in the city. And I'll be honest and upfront with you, I wrote the ordinance, but I didn't write the MU zoning district. And when I was not with the city, another planner wrote it. And I'm always one of those that thinks I'm the best code writer there is, and somebody else is just not going to get it right. And so, he, he didn't, it left some questions unanswered, I guess. And I tried to, was trying to really get at it. And we mentioned the townhouse project up here, Creekside Village Townhouses, and that's in a MU zoning district. And it's got commercial on the front, and it allows the townhouses. So, townhouses got developed, or they're being developed, and so, they split the piece of property up. But what it left unanswered was, how do you, how do you deal with the rest of the district as a whole? And like, for example, Christina will remember this, the issue was open space. And did he have, was he required to have open space for the townhouses equal to 20%, which says, is what the code says? Or is that 20% measured on the entire thing? So, one of the ways he had an out, so to speak, is he could say, well, I only have 8% open space, but the MU district, you know, has to have open space, and so, the rest of the property, once it's developed, has to meet certain things. None of that was down on paper. So, I tried to, I tried to nail that down with a couple of sentences. And the first one really has to do with just explaining what the purpose of that district is, for one. And then, the more important one, to me, was on page two of it, where it talks about, if one part of it's developed, and then you come in for the other one, that you have to meet the dimensional requirements for that part of the MU zoning district. So, it can be, it can be split into two pieces or three pieces, and this helps us at least go back and hold accountable each piece of property as it develops, so to speak. So, like, take, for example, if there's an open space requirement of 15%, then if we had this, and this would have allowed, we would have said to the developer of the townhouses that you have to meet 15%. And there's no ifs, ands, and buts about it, that's the way it goes. So, it's going to close an uncertain aspect of it. And that's about all we're doing, but we're open to other, other things if somebody has ideas. So, that's my presentation for it. You can ask me questions now, we can open up to the public, if you have any-
Am I still allowed to talk?
Sure.
So, speaking of the Creekside development, when that was first brought up in the city of Houston, I had a role in the government back then, and I had requested that the commercial part of that be developed in conjunction with the housing part. And that didn't get very far. And now, we have a development with a commercial aspect of running 53, with a school that got built after that development. And now, you can't put a Mexican restaurant or a Chinese restaurant serving beer or wine in the front of that development, because there's a school right across the street. And so, I'm just wondering if it might be time to revisit, that when we approve these developments that are mixed-use or planned unit developments that have a commercial aspect to them, that there is a requirement, because right now, if it's approved, we can put a restaurant in there that serves beer and wine, or other beverages. But if it's not developed now, and somebody has a letter of intent to rent it, then if another school crops up, or a church, then we lose what we thought we were recommending that was going to be a sales tax generating business for Houston and Jackson County. So, I'm just wondering if that's something that people want to discuss. The other thing I ask is, like, we've had people come in and say, oh, we're going to build apartments and put a brew pub in there. Really? What brew pub are you going to put in? Where's the letter of intent? Where's your lease for the brew pub? How do we know you're really going to put a brew pub in there? Are you just going to build 290 apartments and then go, ah, we thought we were going to have a brew pub, but now we don't? And so, and Jackson County is still 70-something percent agricultural land. So, every opportunity that we as a city have to create a sales tax generating opportunity, we need to make sure that we're not giving that, as Ms. Brown so eloquently pointed out with the apartment complex, with the one brew pub on Town Center Boulevard. So, I'm just wondering if that is something that we could work in, that, that the business element of it always have at least a certain percentage of businesses that are actually sales taxable businesses? Because we're seeing now a lot of strip shopping centers, they have optometry offices in them, tax-free. Massage places, tax-free. And so, if we're creating grocery stores that then have five businesses that are all tax-free generating, we've given up income-producing opportunities for the county and the city. I've said a lot of words. Do I need to cut it down?
No, I'm still going to go on. There is a lot there. The alcohol, I mean, you're right, that's something to be concerned about. The timing of a development, a school goes in, and there are separation requirements from schools with regard to alcohol, beer and wine is different from liquor, et cetera. And they're, they're in the state law, they're in our local ordinance. And so, yes, to keep that in mind, as a general rule, yes. And so, yes, to keep that in mind as a general rule, yes, that is important. What we do here, I don't think there's any way, again, it's another one of, your questions are valid or your concerns are valid, but whether it fits exactly into this ordinance or not is a little less appropriate, I guess. But the other, and when we talk about tax generating businesses, what we have to be, we have to be careful about, when we're doing planning and land use, it's, we're dealing with health and safety and welfare and land use compatibility. And one of our purposes is not to generate revenue. So we have to be careful about how we do something where the purpose is we're trying to get tax revenue. That's, that's zoning for or against commerce and we don't want to get involved in violating the interstate commerce cost, so to speak. Short answer to that, it's not, it's not totally out of line to consider those things, but we don't really want to overtly try and do it in a way to where we're talking about the fiscal impact of the, of, well, when we talk about service end of it, yes, but from a revenue standpoint, I don't think we want to say, we don't want a doctor's office because it's not going to generate sales tax like it would, like a retail store. It's just, that's a little outbound.
If, 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 like Scott was in, I got an implied message in what you were saying is that we want to maybe limit the time a developer has to actually put brick and mortar up.
Oh, no, that's, yeah, there's another, there's another, that, that part of your question, that, that one's really important and really relevant is the extent to which if somebody comes to you, it's called speculation. I mean, everybody wants to, most everybody, would love to upzone their land for the highest and best use that they can sell it to a developer. And so they come in and ask for commercial zoning and we ask them, well, who have you got in mind? I don't really have anybody in mind. I just want to, I want to make more money off of it, so please increase the value of my property, please. In those cases, I think it's fair to ask, you know, are they, do they have, do they have a tenant in mind? And are, are they seriously trying to develop? And in the case of a PUD like the, the brew pub would be, that would have been a, a really good question. It's like, okay, brew pub, we, we like that or we might like that, who, who are you talking to?
See, I was thinking more along the line, and I remember coming here about thirteen, fourteen months ago when the car wash got approved and the gas station got approved. I, I, I haven't seen squat yet. And so we've got land that's rezoned, it's just, as I understand it, can sit that way for years. So I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking is, you know, hey, you're coming in here, you got to have, you got to start putting brick and mortar in two years or something.
That's totally relevant to TA twenty-four oh four. The next one on the agenda is precisely the reason that we're addressing that. So hold that thought and let's revisit it.
I just want to follow up on the letters of intent and that is something they wouldn't tell us because of competitive reasons for those businesses. The council, though, could go into an executive session because it would be a real estate issue and they could hear exactly who it was and know that it was a legitimate deal and not just somebody talking. So.
I'm not sure I'm going to agree with that, but anyway, other comments? Huh? Um, well, the, it's not, the, the, the council can go into executive session to discuss real estate matters, but that's normally interpreted to mean things that they want to go by. Not, not what, not what somebody else is, so it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be appropriate to do what you suggested. Sorry. Okay, so on the MU zoning district, other questions, comments, suggestions, concerns, deletions, additions? Alright, then, is a motion in order?
Do we, is there a public part of this?
Oh, yeah, right, uh, let me open it up for any, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Thank you for the reminder, yes. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? Seeing none, we're going to close the hearing and turn it back over to the commission for further deliberation and/or a motion.
Make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-four dash oh three as written.
One second. Okay. Alright, second on that.
Recommendation for approval.
Approved. Okay. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of ordinance twenty, twenty-four, TA twenty, twenty-four oh three as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay, demand. Good, item two is done. Okay. So now let's go to... What's that? That is your recommendation, that you would, yeah, your recommendation is to approve the amendment. Yeah, that's right. Okay, then, item, ordinance TA twenty-four oh four, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, article eight, zoning amendments and applications to add a new section eight oh eight, duration of approval and for other purposes. Okay, in a nutshell, what this does is this begins to try and address the issue of people's, owners, developers speculatively requesting zoning, and we have some of those, okay? We, honestly, we do have that. And we ought to be concerned about it. We can't really go back to, don't think we can go back and make that retroactive to some of the things that have happened already, but we can amend the code going forward to say, basically, the idea behind this is, well, first, let me say that you, the, you can't just simply revert a zoning by time. So you can't say, well, okay, you got it zoned in two years and nothing's happened, so therefore it automatically goes away? You can't, can't do that, okay? Why? Because the clock cannot change the zoning. It's a legislative decision and only the legislative body can make that decision. So it can't happen automatically. So what's the next best thing? We can monitor that and we can charge the zoning administrator, meaning me, right now, and say, watch these things. When we get something approved, not only a zoning, but a conditional use permit and a variance as well. And if two years goes by and they've done nothing toward, and we've got language in here, exact language, steps toward development. If there's been nothing, then the procedure would be, the zoning administrator brings that to the city council and makes note of the fact that nothing's been done. And then they can elect to re-initiate a zoning request back to what, to change it to whatever they want. Or, or in essence, revert it back to what its original zoning was. And then there's some due process involved in this. For example, if we were going to do that, we would need to tell the property owner and the original applicant, if we can find them, and say, hey, we're doing this. You're going to be on the agenda, the council's going to consider initiating a change. That might be to take away what they gave you or give you something different or lower your density or anything that they might want to do. Because the, the council has the authority to do that at any point in any time, really. I mean, the only limitations to that are political and practical and legal. But the council approves and adopts the zoning ordinance and a map and at any time they want to go through the proper procedure, they can change the zoning. And I'm not suggesting this, Ben, don't quote me on this, please, but if the council wanted to go in and say, we don't like GP Enterprises' planned unit development and we're going to go in and, and reverse that zoning, they technically could. Now, they probably are going to face a lawsuit over it and they might even lose that lawsuit, who knows? But the point is, they have the power to do it. And so what we would do is notify, if two years go by and you haven't done anything, then it's the zoning administrator's requirement to come in, give it to the city council and say, here's these things that haven't occurred. What do you want to do? Do you want to initiate a zoning request? And if you do, we have to follow the zoning procedures law. We have to advertise it. And we would invite the property owner and the applicant to that meeting where they could say, oh, I know it's been two years, but my grandmother's been sick and, you know, whatever else or, or it's been a bad economy or it's been, financing has been an issue. There's, there's good reasons and not so good reasons. They could persuade the council not to act on it. Or the council could act on it. Then they go through the process again with public notice, sign on the property, all that stuff. And so that's the answer. This is what I think the best that we can do to address the issue because we can't really go backwards with it, I don't think.
So let me put on that string a little bit further. If, you know, XYZ Corporation comes in there and wants to build a hundred homes, can the city dictate that, okay, we're going to build a hundred homes? It takes four years to build a hundred homes. By the end of year one, you have to have twenty-five percent of your, you know, utilities and homes up. Can we do something like that? Give them certain gates to meet at certain times of the project?
We could try and do that, but it's going to be really difficult. When we're writing code, we're, we have to, we have to try and think about every different situation. It's hard to nail something like that.
Because my, my concern is, you know, we give them that two-year gap and, oh gee whiz, my grandmother's passed away and, you know, I lost my fortune and I want two more years and I want two more years. And here we are, six years later with weeds growing up of signs of saying, future home development here. That's, that's what I'm trying to, but I think, you know...
It's going to be up to the council's decision after two years. I mean, they don't, people went automatically, get more, two more years.
No, no, I, I got you, but, but it's...
Right now, they got nothing.
No, and I agree with you. It's just that you've got two years and all we've got are, is a field full of weeds. And now they're coming back and saying, and here are my legitimate reasons. And they may be legitimate, but then it's an extra year. And, and we haven't seen anything, the city hasn't collected fees, meanwhile, we're still maintaining, or they started and, and the city has to maintain the property because they haven't done anything in three years. That's, that's just my concern, of whether we can give them timelines to do reasonable things to do. In a year, you should probably have utilities, curbs and roads put in. To me, that seems reasonable. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a construction guy, but versus two years of nothing happened but weeds growing.
No, first point is that maintenance is the owner's responsibility, whether they're developing or not. And we have a, a property maintenance code. And so if it grows up in weeds, we can cite them for violation of codes and the owner, whether they're developing or not, has, can be forced into maintaining the property. That's one thing. Forgot, well, I had another thought, but...
I'll talk and maybe it kind of figure mine.
It will, it will.
My concern is more of a financial side to this. When, when somebody comes to us and asks us for a thousand home subdivision, we then promise them that we will have wastewater treatment plant capacity for them when they start paying their tap fees and building permit fees and such. So they're asking us to commit to having this eight thousand dollar per house wastewater treatment plant capacity and yet they're not giving us anything. Unless we negotiate it upfront like Dr. White's has done so well recently. So my concern is, once we borrow the twenty-five million dollars, one point four million dollars a year for twenty years is going out the door. And unless they prepay their tap fees or start building and pay for the tap fees as they do it, that one point four million comes out of the city's sustainable revenue and not from building permit fees. So the reason I like this, Jerry, is because I think it helps mitigate that risk on the citizens of Houston.
Yeah, that, that's a very important point. And this would help do that because what we do, and we'll talk about planning in the next item, we put together, when, when, when the council zones something, we know what the number of units were and the square footage of building space and all that. And we translate that into needs for water, sewer, police, general government, fire, EMS, all that. I mean, we, we look at those and then we plan for that and we try and capital improvement out those needs. And if it's not going to happen, then, you know, we're not, we're, we're, what's the word? We're, we're, we got to be careful stewards of the city's, the taxpayers' funds. And, I mean, I'd love to go on and on and on about the, the problem that you're talking about and I will say something about it because it's so important. And that is that if, if you have a thousand eight, a thousand units and you approve that, then your obligation is basically that you're going to plan the facilities you need. They're relying upon the city for sewer. And yes, and it wasn't me that negotiated anything on that, but there is a water and sewer agreement and in the case of Rockland Homes, they agreed to pay six point three, three million dollars in order to get what they wanted. Uh, but the problem is still there and I don't want to sound overly critical, but here's the thing. Yes, you're going to get six point three million dollars, that's in the bank, but the other twenty-two million dollars that requires you to, that you need to build that plant, now you, you're committing capital funds of the city to do that. And then what happens when the economy tanks and you don't have any other building permit fees? You don't have the tap fees coming in. Yes, you have six million, but where's the other? You're going to have to, you still have to pay the Georgia Environmental Facilities Authority the monthly hundreds of thousands or whatever it might be. And so it's a really important decision that your elected officials have to make and then it's that, are we going to go into debt with no real guarantee that we're going to have the funds through development to pay for this? It's, it's a, pure and simple, it's a crapshoot. And you get it, you get it wrong and you're going to be inefficiently paying a lot of tax money for something that's going to sit there. And in, in the economics term, we call it the, the marginal costs of, that are just going to exceed everything. So it's a serious, serious issue and we have the, and I'll give you one example of where this is really important, is everybody, I think, knows about the Percol Farm property and we rezoned that property for a planned unit development and industrial development. So we have, how many units was that? Five hundred? I think there's five hundred, maybe six hundred units. Okay. In that development, plus industrial development, a couple of million square feet of industrial development. Well, that project got all the way to preliminary plat for the townhouse part of it. We, we had that like ninety-nine percent ready to go. And then they, they didn't do the development and who bought it? Uline has officially bought that property. And, I mean, we, what we really, this is a little off track, but what we really ought to do is we ought to be getting in there with Uline, somebody at the city, mayor, whoever, city manager, and saying, you know, I know that this is not a priority for you to change the zoning on this, but we've got, we're, we're sitting on the books with five hundred units that you don't want to develop, but we've got to sit there and hold for capacity for water and sewer and, and poli- water and sewer and, and police and everything, and by golly, if you wanna do industrial, let's get it changed back over to industrial, and let's clear the plate of five hundred units, 'cause you're not gonna have that much, um, you're not gonna create that kind of impact on the, on the, um, schools, on the police, on the sewer, et cetera. And so there's every bit of interest in, you know, honestly, I would, if the council asked me today, I'd say, you know, talk to Percol Farm, I hope you don't quote me in this, Ben, but, ta-talk to, uh, Uline and say, you know, look, we know this is not a priority for you to rezone this, but we need you to get this rezoned. Um, and maybe if you don't wanna do it, then we'll rezone it, we'll start initiating it, so you'll, you'll come to have a conversation with us. Uh, because we need, if, if it's gonna be their next industrial campus, let's see that that happens, and let's get the zoning changed, and get our facility plans, and all of these projections you see on the next item, those get changed. Five hundred units is a lot of units. We had a thousand units in this city in twenty-twenty. We had a thousand units. Okay? That's half of that, right there, on that one piece of property. So it's not insignificant. Sorry for the soapbox. So, other thoughts, suggestions about what to do?
To me, again, uh, I'm a rookie in this, but it seems like these kind of things can help that, if you put time limits on, on the development. Okay?
It, it will going forward. I, I wish, I wish that we could apply it to GP Enterprises', and I wish we could apply it to Uline and, and everybody else who may or may not...
And it doesn't mean the council has to do something when the time limit's up.
That's correct.
Say, that's the time.
All it does is it forces the issue onto the agenda. They can still say, ah, we, we don't need to do anything with it.
Exactly.
We, you can't go back, but from what I've heard, unless I've heard wrong, the city council may have some options where they could just move forward with the zoning change and push the issue.
That's right. That's right. And like I said, I mean, I'd rather not be quoted about it, than I'd be inclined to...
They can quote me, they can fire me, but I guess, you know...
You know, I mean, I think the answer that they gave was, we bought the property, and they, they checked the tax rules, they own the property, but that they don't wanna do anything about it for, like, four years. Like, well, four years? You know, that's a long time. I mean, we, we're not gonna go change our land use plan to all industrial because it's zoned. You could flip that property tomorrow back to somebody, and they're knocking on the door wanting to build five hundred units. So we gotta plan for the five hundred units. If that's not what they want, and they're sure they're gonna, oh, get rid of them. They do us a favor.
I'm gonna add just one more personal anecdote to the thing, and I, I think Dr. White's is completely correct on this. The Flowery branch down the road, they discharged their wastewater treatment plant fluids into the Chattahoochee River. They have a much higher level of wastewater treatment plant processing they have to do than we do. They found themselves in a similar situation where they had a lot of units approved, and then when they sent out to bid for their wastewater treatment plant upgrade, it came in at, like, fifty million dollars. And the mayor just said, we, we can't burden our citizens for this if we don't know when y'all are gonna start building. And so then they, communication is such a wonderful thing. And the mayor communicated, I guess through their planner, to all the developers and said, if you're not gonna do anything, then we can't promise you that when you do start doing it, you're gonna have wastewater treatment plant capacity. And they came to an agreement with the developers and the builders to get prepayments, and now they are back building an upgrade to their wastewater treatment plant capacity. And so I think by passing this, we give our council and zoning manager, city manager, a tool to use that says, hey, we appreciate that y'all wanna build here, and in order for that to happen, we need something from that. So I, I, I think this is a great thing.
If we could do more with it, I would, but I think it's, it takes it about as far as we can go within legal boundaries. Okay? Other discussion on this one? Is there a motion in order?
Do we gotta do the public?
Oh, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I turn it back over to the planning commission for discussion and motion.
Make a motion to, uh, recommend approval.
I would second it.
Oh, twenty twenty-four dash zero four.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for recommend approval. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, that's seen in. Okay. All right, well, again, the council initiated these, and they will all, three of these go to the city council in June for public hearing with mo-with recommendations for approval, the first one being with one, one change as discussed. Okay, good. All right. Do we need a break or anything? Plow through? Everybody still good?
Keep going.
Okay. All right, the next item is amendment of the comprehensive plan to adopt an update to the capital improvements element and community work program, required annual update. Uh, for background, the city is required to have its plan annually updated because it charges impact fees on development. We charge impact fees for police and parks and open space. We had fire, but we, uh, backed out of that after Coulter, um, uh, sued us. Um, and so that's why we're here, we have to do this annually. Um, it involves land use assumptions, or in other words, projections. Um, usually, this is a fairly mundane thing that we do every year, because there's not that much that has changed, but you all know what has changed around here in the last year. We've approved, uh, I don't know how many thou-, I think a couple thousand housing units, uh, in the last year, I think, have been approved, and so, um, we have to go back and change all of these assumptions on how much land we, how many, how much police facility space that we need, and how many acres of parkland that we need, and so all these developments, again, the, the Uline property has five hundred units baked into that as the need for police and parkland. Um, if it's all industrial, and they give us eighty to a hundred acres of parkland, that's a whole lot better of a situation than what we wind up having without, if it's just gonna be, um, if it's gonna be residential. So, uh, that's what it's all about. The, the capital improvement element pertains to the impact fees and planning for that. The community work program is broader. That's a five-year plan that says, what is it that the city's gonna do over the next five years? Major actions, programs, um, capital improvements, et cetera, that are not impact fee related. And so those, that's the big picture of this. Let me get the hearing part out of the way. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition to this, um, application? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Turn it over to the planning commission for discussion.
It doesn't really do anything, other than its information.
Well, no, I, I mean, it's not, it, it's not, there isn't a lot with the capital improvement element that I would expect the planning commission to weigh in on. The projections and estimates are technical things that I've taken care of, you're not expected to critique that or offer anything different from that. There's a level of service standard that, and thank you for that, 'cause let me, let me raise a point where, what's different here? Um, what's proposed that's different from the adopted version? And that is, um, there is a level of service standard that is proposed to change in this. Why? Because we have so many, we've approved so much development, so much, I mean, literally over a thousand units, maybe close to two thousand units more this year that we have to plan for than we had last year. I mean, we annexed, after all, we annexed, um, and zoned in, what, August to October of twenty-three, we annexed the Rockland Homes Kenterly property. That's a thousand and fifty-five units, excuse me, plus, um, other non-residential space. That's a thousand units. That wasn't in the plan, so we then have to recalculate what our needs are, um, for police and for park and rec. And then we have other things that we've done, I mean, we, the GP Enterprises', as I call it, um, that was six hundred and sixty homes, right there, and then we have the Providence, uh, group, that's three hundred and thirty-four. So there, there's two thousand homes that were not in the city's approval a year, a year ago, okay? They were pending, some of them were pending, but they were not approved, and so now we, when you approve them, you gotta plan for them. And so for two thousand units, that means X number of acres, much more, and we set these level of service standards as if, um, we were planning for a smaller number of units, but when you extend a standard and add two thousand homes, the amount of, the sheer amount of land that we need for recreation purposes is arguably, um, impossible, because we have to have, we have to spend this money in the city. It had, the development impact fees have to be spent in your service area, the service area is the city. And so where are we gonna find parkland? And I'm so glad Christina's in the audience, because she's the one on the council charged with looking at, how are we gonna implement our park and rec programs? And she's starting to go, hmm, where can I find the acreage that we thought we needed, which is a smaller amount? Well, now you do the calculation, and I, I don't even remember the numbers, but it's, I mean, I think we need, we need four hun-, we need forty-something acres, or is it even more than that? So...
Cumulative demand, you park, you know, you say, about twenty-fourteen acres, that's twenty-fourteen thirty-five.
Yeah, yeah, cumulative demand, we need a hundred acres at the, at the cur-, at the current standard, and we have thirty-seven. And give the council credit, they bought land, you know, they bought really important land, one of the best pieces of property they could buy, they bought it, and it's like, yay! It's like, wait a minute, don't celebrate here, you know, you're, it's, celebrate temporarily, but then go on, you've got a lot more work to do, and where are you gonna find the land? And so to me, there's few opportunities to justify going back on our word, which was that we were gonna have five point three, three acres per thousand people, but now we have, we're gonna have four thousand, five thousand more people, and it's not gonna work, folks. I mean, I don't know where you're gonna find sixty more acres of land in the city, unless you, uh, I mean, there's some places, a few places left, Shannon Sales Properties, one of them, um, so...
Annexed into the city.
Annexed into the city, then it's in your service area, yeah, sure, that's a way. But I'm, I'm reluctantly recommending that we drop that level of service, simply because it's, um, it, it's a good time to do it, because it, we've at least met our standard. The, there's legal questions and concerns about ever making a change, like, for example, if, if you paid, if you developed in here, and you paid impact fees at a level of service of five point three, three per thousand, and then you paid for that, and then the next guy comes in and you go, oh, well, you're gonna pay for four per thousand. Does that seem fair? You know? We don't wanna do that willy-nilly. I think we have enough reason to change it, we're allowed to change it, but we wanna be equitable and fair, and it's not, we do that with great care, and I think that we can justify dropping that, because it's, it's almost physically impossible now to do that much, um, that much develop-, that much open space, parkland acquisition. And the other thing is, too, that we can argue legitimately that we have a lot of the, all these new developments are in planned unit developments, and they have open spaces. They're, they're bringing forth their, um, their, their, they're satisfying some of the required demands themselves by providing open spaces and parklands and recreation facilities, et cetera. So there's two good arguments for reducing the level of service from five point three, three to four, and that's why I'm recommending it. Police, you know, I think we had a high, we, we have almost one, one square foot of space per person, no, per functional population, meaning jobs plus how, plus people who live here. That's point nine five, that level of service, or one square foot for every person or job in the city. Well, look at what that comes out to now. I mean, the council, and help me with that, um...
Big, big, big...
Yeah, um, we have thirty-one hundred and eighty-eight square feet. We need twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand, so we have to, um, we have a, we have a big, uh, big need to, to meet that. And I'm not recommending that we change that yet, but it's, it's open for discussion. I don't feel like we, it's as easily rationalized as the park one to make a change, but it, it's a lot of acreage to begin with, because not only will we have to build, well, look at it this way, then if we're, if we're gonna move, if we're gonna build a police facility, and we need twenty-two thousand square feet, we're not gonna leave this three thousand square feet over here at Old City Hall for par-, for, for police, we're gonna replace that. Well, that has to get built over here, okay? Or wherever, wherever we're gonna put it. So really, we need to build twenty-five thousand. Um, that's a lot, and, and we need a new, we, we're gonna need a new city hall on top of all that, too, right? I mean, we already know that. We built this, and we knew the day that this got built, that we were gonna outgrow it almost immediately. Then we added two thousand units on top of that. So look where we are, folks. Called growth management. Um, yeah, but not really that much, but you're raising a good point. See, when, um, going back to the Percol property, again, the Uline, um, when that got approved, we were ready to receive from that owner close to a hundred acres or so, maybe more, maybe a little less, of, of land that they were gonna give us. Now, if they gave us that, all of a sudden, hey, our level of service is fine, right? I mean, give us that hundred acres, and we exceed our five point three, three, nothing to worry about. Well, that's all the more reason why we might wanna kinda get Uline to come in and say, you know, please go ahead and get this done, not only can you reduce our demand, but you can increase our supply by dedicating some of this land, and we'd like to see you do that. We would be in great shape if that happened, but it hasn't happened, and you can't put it in the bank unless you have it, so... Are we boring Ben to tears here? He hasn't le-, he hasn't left yet. He hasn't le- he hasn't left yet. Yeah, it's, it includes, it includes municipal court. And the, and the beauty behind, the only really cool thing about it is that, um, and this is not cheating, it may sound a little bit like cheating, but it's not. Because you can build a courtroom, and then you can have that double as a council chambers. So we have a ancillary benefit of general government to the police impact fee. And it, it's built first and foremost as a court space, but then we use it for general government functions. Recommend, recommend approval of it? Yeah, uh, yeah, the, to, the original question was, is there much, if anything, that we can do about it? And that's why I got off on the tangent of talking about the level of service. That's a policy question that the Planning Commission could weigh in on if you feel comfortable. If not, um, you know, we're gonna do this every, every year. Plus, the other factor is, we're going to, um, engage in a five-year update of the comprehensive plan, starting near the end of the year. And that's when we can go in with a lot more, um, deliberation and time associated with what we do. But we have to get through this annual update that's due October thirty, thirty-first.
Jerry, can we do seven and eight together? Are they close enough where we can do them together?
No, let's not, because, um, I might, uh, I don't know if you're gonna be comfortable with the land use plan part of it yet. I, I introduced some new information to you tonight, and we'll let you decide if you wanna make a motion on that, but, um, let's keep them separate.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the amendment of the comprehensive plan, City of Houston, to adopt and update capital improvements element and community work program.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second to recommend approval of the capital improvement element and the community work program. It's been seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed? So it's unanimous. Okay, now, the last one, I, I will, I will give you an out on this one, if you're not comfortable, um, moving ahead with it. But let me, let me introduce the item and, uh, call for a hearing, and then we'll see whether you're, you wanna proceed with it or not. Uh, the, the land use plan is one of the most important things that are in the comprehensive plan. It, it's the first thing we look at when we rezone property is, is the property, is what they're proposing inconsistent or consistent with the plan. One example was that planned unit development for two hundred and some odd apartment units. Well, a lot of that was commercial land. That was a big part of my objection as planning staffer, is that we don't really wanna take away, not only do we not need a whole bunch more housing units on top of the two thousand we've approved in the last year, but we don't really wanna take away a whole bunch of commercial land that is our tax base in the future. And so, um, one of the bases for recommending against that was it's slated for almost entirely commercial development, not residential, and that's inconsistent with the land use plan. What better reason to deny it than it's inconsistent with that plan? That was not the only reason, but it was a good, it was a good starting reason. So, um, it's a very important thing. And we haven't updated it since February of twenty-one. Been already over three years, unbelievable. And you know what we've done in the last year. So what I'd like to see us do is make the changes, even if I don't necessarily agree with all the council's changes to zoning, they got zoned, and so the plan should reflect what the zoning is fundamentally. Um, unless we think it's gonna go away. And even in that case, like in the case of Perkel Farm, U-line, I'd love to show that as just industrial development, but it's zoned until it's, until it, we get rid of five hundred units of la- of, of development, then it needs to reflect what the zoning is. And so that's fundamentally what we're doing. And I've outlined, basically, I gave you some, um, figures of what the, what the, um, site plans were that were approved for everything. Rockland Homes, Kroger, uh, Providence Development, U-line, um, and so on. Um, GP Enterprises. And that we would go in and change the map. We don't do the map in-house, it's done by GIS, and we have the county GIS department who does the maps, and it's gonna take them a little while, so that's why you have your hand-colored versions by me. Um, and that's why I don't know if you're comfortable with it or not. But, um, I showed you today, what you didn't get until today's meeting was another memo dated today. And, uh, I know you haven't had time to look at that, but basically, the whole Twin Lakes development, we've got, if you look at our map now in twenty-one, there was only maybe a hundred lots on there. Well, now we have, I don't know how many, we got over a thousand, you know, maybe more than that that are platted. And so we wanna bring that up to, into, um, bring it up to date and have that done really before we get into the long, longer-range comprehensive plan update. In my opinion, I'd like to see it done. But it's not, on the other hand, it's not urgent either. If you, if you didn't wanna move on it today, that would be okay. But on the other hand, if we can move it ahead with the other one, then we've got two amendments that are going, and these have to be reviewed, uh, and, and approved by the state. It goes to a regional commission in Athens, and it goes to the State Department of Community Affairs. And so, um, we make a recommendation, hold the hearing, but we won't be adopting this, uh, until we get an okay from the state and a review by the region, in any event. So it's gonna take, that's gonna take us another two or three months, probably. Two months, maybe. So, uh, it, what I'm saying is, I'd like you to act on it if you're comfortable. But if you're not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna bother me that, that, um, you've had a lot to look at tonight. Uh, if you're not comfortable moving ahead, it won't kill us to put it off.
To clarify, the, what, what you've put together here are things that have already been approved. And you're, what we're suggesting is that the change be made to the master plan, called the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, comprehensive plan, and specifically the future land use plan.
Same thing as kind of a master plan that came familiar with from, precisely what I had.
Yeah, yeah.
Proposed usages of land, is, is kinda what it is. If it's, this stuff's been approved, so you say it updated to change from whatever it was on there in twenty-one to what actually should happen, assuming that it does happen?
Correct, and some of it was annexation, whether it's not even shown in the city at all. Like Rockland Homes, that's two hundred and eighty-something acres.
I got it.
Uh, Jerry, so I'm looking at this, and this is Deer Creek Farms here, and this is the, uh, park, and this is the Perkel property. Is there a way that we could take our color codes across here to indicate what's already approved?
Yeah, in fact, that's, uh, let me show you the page where I've tried to do that.
Oh, that's in this over here?
It's in today's memo, so you, you haven't even seen it yet, really, um, let me.
Oh, I, I've got it right here.
Is it the first page?
Yes.
It's the very first page, yeah. So that's roughly what it, what it would look like, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was in there.
I mean, sort of superimposing the exact site plan on the map, which we're not able to do. This is freehand drawn in a general sort of way.
You did a great job.
Hollow inside the lines.
Yeah, yeah.
You see the open space, too, that we would be getting, too? If, if we had U-line, uh, to donate that land, again, we'd solve our problem with parks for the long run.
Question, Jerry, so I'm looking at that, that first map, and the, the property that's marked, uh, Park Recs and Conserv on the Mulberry? Is, is that all usable land, or is there wetland in there, or?
Wetlands and floodlands.
So none of that's usable for parks?
On his drive.
Well, it, it can be used as passive parks, maybe, maybe a building or two.
Okay, and when you say passive park, I'm not sure, I don't understand what that means.
None approved, like walking trails, just open, open space. You can look at it, but you can't touch it.
Gotcha. There's probably snakes there, anyway. Okay. I'm good with it, mhm.
So did we, did we open this? For public hearing, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the request? Being none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? Yes, please.
How does it, how does it benefit us to drop that level of service? Four is like the bare minimum per thousand, if you look. And there are a lot of major cities like Chicago that have levels of service much higher than, than four. And, um, so how does that actually benefit us? Why do we wanna do that?
Um, well, it doesn't so much benefit, I guess. Um, it, it responds to the constraints that we have, I guess, is one way of looking at it. Um, that we have, I mean, again, the two, the two reasons I came up with was that we have, um, we have a lot of these new units going into planned unit developments that already have twenty percent open space requirement, and they're building, um, active recreation facilities, things like clubhouses, et cetera. And so we don't, one argument is that we don't need as much, um, as we thought we did. But, uh, it only benefits us in the sense that we have less to spend. It, it, um, it's a benefit to have more open space. I mean, that's one way of looking at it. I think it, uh, I'm not trying to read your mind, but if you're suggesting that we think critically about that, and, I mean, it, it could very well be a recommendation that you, um, well, you know, I guess we're, I'm back on the oldest end of item now, but, um, but, but it, but it's still, I mean, it relates. We could, we could go back and revisit if this influenced you. But, um, I mean, it's better to have a higher level of service. The question is whether, whether that's realistic, whether we can afford it, can we implement it? And my point is, if, if U-line cooperates with us, we will. We could, we could play a game, play a game, that's not right. We could wait, wait it out, um, and leave it like it is, and hope that we get the eighty to a hundred acres from them, and then we're good, and we, then we didn't need to drop it in the first place.
So, Jerry, does the green space that we get with these developments, would that offset the drop from five to four?
It's one argument we can make, that.
Is it one for one, or is there, uh?
No, it's not that, it's not that precise.
Okay.
But I, I'm just, what I'm saying is that, okay, we want people to have a certain amount of open space and park and, and recreation land. And we're going to provide that, but it assumes that you have no other options, or you have no other services. But in the case of Houston, because everything's built, not everything, but all the major development is a planned unit development that requires twenty percent open space, that requires, um, um, facilities, that we can then argue, well, we didn't anticipate that in twenty-twenty, and now we, it's just the sheer volume that scares me. It's two thousand units times five, times five, uh, acres per thousand persons. And, you know, that, that adds up really quick, and can we, can we do it?
Is it fair to say we're taking a burden from the city and putting it back on those developments? By doing that, if you include the green space in those developments? Is that a fair statement? I know it's general, but.
I think we're saying that the, part of the, part of the demand is being satisfied by developers rather than the city. Therefore, we can conceivably drop our, our skin in the game, but.
That, I think that's how I understood it, that since they're taking twenty percent of whatever land they're doing and creating that open space, then we could say out of, you know, a hundred acres, twenty acres of that is there, that's sat- that already satisfies twenty percent of what our need would be. So by dropping our requirement by twenty percent, we're kind of making that blend in.
Sure.
But, but then the, the counterargument to that, and I think it's fair to go back and, if you wanna revisit that other one, you know, uh, whether you wanna, you know, your prior recommendation was to go to four, go from five point three-three to four. And if that wasn't well enough considered and debated, then you can come back and, and look at that again. I think.
Is there a downside to tapering this to the next meeting?
That's okay, too, I think. If we're really close to it, I prefer that to go ahead, but, uh, I mean, I, I mean, again, I started it with the, uh, well, now, I, on the capital improvement element, I, I don't wanna, I don't want that one to be delayed. The land use plan, I think we could delay it. But that one, we really should stay on schedule, because that's gotta be done by October thirty-first. And the land use plan is something that if we didn't get to it by October thirty-first, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter. It doesn't have any implications to us to delay.
Well, I'm gonna say something, I can't.
I'm shocked.
I, I knew you would be, I knew you would be. So I, I think what Dr. White is putting out to us is if we don't lower the level of service, and based on the limited sustainable revenue that the City of Houston takes in, and we become absolutely obligated to buy a hundred acres somewhere at an exorbitant price, are we really prepared for our council members to say, we're gonna build you some more park space, but the miller rate's gonna go up to five mills instead of three? I mean, that's a, I'm just saying, if that's what the burden would be on them to have to do, and I think I would rather say to our younger people and people on limited incomes, I'd rather reduce the level of service somewhat, rather than create a financial burden on people that are already stressed out.
I think that's a fair statement to say, and only because we would like to think that the, the fee that we get is enough to buy everything that we need, but rarely does that really work out perfectly. And with the rising cost of land, uh, the fee that we're getting is a good one, but we don't know how much it's gonna cost. And so if you, if you need a hundred acres, and you got land, you got enough money to buy sixty, the other forty's gonna get paid out of with some other funds, meaning maybe you're gonna raise taxes to do it. Or maybe you use your special local option sales tax to do it, or some combination. So it's a fair thing to say.
Well, wouldn't it be fair to say also that if we did lower it to that, and then land appeared from something somewhere down the road, and we exceed expectations? That's not a bad thing.
No, everything's fine.
You can always go back up.
We always do more than what you promised you. No, don't raise it back up, but you would make that provided, and that would be right around, you know, election time. And say, oh, look what I did.
So, so can we make a motion now, or something like?
Well, now, you made, you made a motion on that part. But if you want, if you wanna open that back up, a motion to reconsider that.
No, no, no.
I, I don't see a reason, I mean, the land changes, it's, it's changing what's there, and it's just basically updating to what we should. I, I'm, I'm good with a motion, that I'll make a motion to accept, recommend approval.
This is for the future land use plan?
For the future land use plan.
Got a question.
I have a question, Jerry. Where are we in the plot, and does it address anything that, um, some park lakes or things like that?
Do you know Christine?
How far along are we?
Um, we're starting a new one. Um, we're starting a new one, I think. Uh, didn't we vote, did we just vote in on that, or we vote in in November?
I think it's coming in November.
I think it's November.
Coming in November.
So we're, I think we're finishing the cycle, the six-year cycle, and then we vote in November at the county level? Then we even know that. We're splot, we're, we're doing, we wanna add a T-splot, too, transportation. But if, if it gets approved, it has to be approved by the voters.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're the rich.
And if it's not approved, then you don't have the money. So, yeah, I think that's, I think we're gonna start a new six-year cycle here, assuming that the voters in the county approve.
Okay, so Houston does not have a T-splot?
No, it's a county-wide thing.
Okay, it's county-wide.
The state gets a share.
We get a share.
Okay, yeah.
Based on population.
Right.
In twenty-twenty, not in twenty-twenty-four, if it was based on twenty-twenty-four, it would probably double or triple. But we gotta wait until twenty-third, I think, before we can play more superior ways.
So are you looking for a second now, Jerry? Are you looking for a second?
Yeah, we are. We have a motion on the floor to, uh, approve, uh, recommend approval of the land use plan amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Boy, I hope I can get these minutes right. I may be calling somebody. Okay, so, um, that concludes the agenda items for tonight. There's other business on the agenda. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission? Okay.
We've talked about a number of different zonings and what they are. Where can I find all that?
In the zoning ordinance, and, uh, you have had no, absolutely no, um...
Yep, you're right.
Nothing, nothing given to you yet. Um, so let me make a note, um, zoning ordinance. So we need to get, we need to get you, it, it is on the webpage, but we don't need to make it any more difficult for you. I mean, we should provide you directly some of the things.
It's interesting, some stuff we've been talking about, things there, I'd like to be able to reference to it, so I'd go and look and kinda educate myself on some of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, uh, we'll get, get you, uh, get you the zoning ordinance and the zoning map and send that out, too, and the comp plan. Yeah, as it is. Uh, and then, any, any other, any other items? Let me just, uh, I don't know that you're gonna have any agenda items. I don't think that you are gonna have public hearings next time, but I've got a, um, I'd like to spend about an hour and a half on, uh, procedures, like what we, what you've learned and seen me do tonight, and, um, and go through that on, on public hearing procedures. Uh, because you're gonna have some where there's, there's people in the audience, and you need to know how to deal with that and so forth. So with your permission, I'll plan to do a presentation, um, on zoning procedures, on running public hearings, the do's and don'ts and so forth, and so, we'll do. Well, plus, we have a regular, we have a regular, regular date, but I can also shorten, too, then have to see it, um... Okay, okay. All right, uh, hearing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. You're welcome. Oh, yeah, if you know, uh, I, I think so, yeah, I think it's... Okay. Yeah. We could, we could change, we could change our approach, meaning, um, amend, probably amend the plan. I don't know if we need to amend the ordinance or not. We might have to even amend the ordinance, but we could, we could do that if we, if we decided that. Thank you. Um, if we had enough land and we met that, we could, we, we've talked about how we would, uh, we could repurpose that and go, go a different direction. Well, see, here's the, the thing that we have, the limit that we have right now is that we have, um, the county operates our recreation program, and they own, they own and manage, like the ball fields. We're not spending any money on the ball field, and so it was a, a kinda clear distinction between, um, the county doing that, uh, doing the recreation and the active, uh, improvements, that that was, we have an intergovernmental agreement with them to do it. And so if you start to take part of that back, it's sort of, yeah. Yeah, with, with, with some considerable work, yeah, we can, we can do it. Uh, we, we can't just go do it. We have to change, like this document that's here, and then, like I said, we may have to, um, come. No. Yeah, that's, and that would be the argument that we made, is okay, well, we've collected this money for park and recreation, park and open space acquisition, whereas, you know what, we met our standards to be on the wild stream. Why should we continue to do that when we don't provide anymore?